Please rise for the invocation by Councilman Danny Seaman.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you in this wonderful place we call home here in North Carolina. Be with us tonight as we make decisions that will affect each and every one of our citizens. Help us to be sound in our thinking, meditative in our hearts, keep us ever mindful of the needs of others. In your great name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands its standers, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call on one of our students from St. Stevens High School, Karen Moore, and let her introduce herself and then let us point out the other students to introduce themselves and then we'll talk about what they're doing here.
I'm Karen Moore. I'm a sophomore at St. Stevens.
Do we have others?
I'm Ben Johnson. I'm also a sophomore at St. Stevens.
Hi, I'm Karen Jane. I'm a sophomore at St. Stevens.
I'm Bethany Lewis and I'm a sophomore at St. Stevens.
Okay, these folks are here, they're enrolled in honors, civics, and economics. They're visiting tonight to complete an assignment to become more aware of structure and function of local government. So we're delighted to have United States of North Carolina. And we have Bonnie Woodward from 3250 St. Luke United Methodist Church, and she has a crowd with her.
I do. I'm currently the American Batch Coordinator for 3250, and these young gentlemen are studying citizenship in the community merit batch, and one of their requirements to attend is legal.
Chief Moore. Wait a minute, I have the chief hollers here. Can you delegate this?
Yes, sir. He can handle it.
I understand. At our ages, we've got to save our energy, don't you think? I don't know why he picks on me about my age and I pick on him. Steve, I know we had one homeless person who died in a fire here. Other than that, how many years since we had a life lost in a fire? Fourteen years. I think that's remarkable in our city, and I note a lot of factors go into that, and I think one is the commitment that our fire department has to fire safety. Whereas the City of Hickory is committed to ensuring safety and security of all of those living here and visiting here, whereas home fires killed more than 2,500 people in the U.S. in 2011, and fire departments in the United States responded to more than 370,000 home fires, whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires, whereas 57% of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas Hickory's residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops, whereas Hickory's first responders are dedicated to reducing occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, whereas 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme Prevent Kitchen Fires effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires during this week and all year round. Therefore, on behalf of Hickory City Council, I do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th to 12th as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Hickory. Mr. Moore, do you have anything you'd like to say?
First of all, we'll be kicking off Fire Prevention Week at Home Depot starting Sunday around lunchtime, so you guys want to come out. There'll be plenty of other apparatuses from other departments, and we'll take it that way.
And you're kicking it off with what?
There'll be displays, fire trucks, displays, fire educators on the side, they'll check car seats, or any other questions that you and our citizens may have to make it our homes safe.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. And representing one of our very important citizen committees and councils, Laurie Oger is going to make a branding video presentation for Business Development Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, City Council members, Mr. Crowe, Mr. Berry. I'm here on behalf of the Business Development Committee, which was formed in 2010. As you know, our committee has been working on many projects, including our branding. Life Well Crafted, our brand, is embarking on its second year, and we are making strides, including a mention in Washington DC's Kiplinger Letter under the Economic Development. This newsletter article is about how branding is imperative to small and mid-sized cities in today's world, and Hickory is mentioned as leading the way. Please take a look at this six-minute video, which tells our story, and tonight you will see how we are showcasing working, learning, and living in Hickory.
Natural wonder to artistic splendor, recreational playground to entertainment haven, small-town values to big-city drive, a friendly business climate with southern hospitality, an entrepreneurial center with a rich heritage of quality craftsmanship, the hub of Charlotte's great northwest. This is Hickory, North Carolina. Life well crafted.
Hickory's past and future prospects have drawn to this place people with an eye for detail, a hand for hard work, and a passion for making something of themselves and of the future. This has never been more evident than in a wide variety of businesses and industries you'll find. Hickory serves as one of the leading furniture manufacturing hubs with a deep, rich history in the industry, a fiber-optic center creating the means in which we communicate with the world, and a growing supplier of the energy sector. Whether products are designed or made in Hickory, or you're receiving service from one of our skilled citizens, you can have the assurance that they will share the same level of craftsmanship that can be found in the city as a whole. The business environment is also inspiring new businesses and entrepreneurs to call Hickory home, as they settle into a place where they can practice their skill, collaborate within a creative community. And this community is on the move, with buildings going up, buildings being refurbished, data centers being established, new progressive businesses taking root, and a focus being placed on new industries and technologies. You'll find a community with a collective spirit of craftsmanship and a strong focus on creativity, artistry, and quality.
Here you'll find a collection of some of the best educational institutions, teachers and instructors, opportunities, and a community yearning to learn and grow. It all starts with our children, educated through a combination of excellent public and private schools across the area, including a career in arts magnet school, with students experiencing the best of both award-winning teachers and the use of new technologies to aid their learning. Students in Hickory are being prepared for the world to come. When ready for higher education opportunities, Hickory has many options to consider, with a nationally renowned four-year university, an outstanding community college, and a distance education center for other state universities, all institutions creating top-notch learning environments for our students. But education doesn't stop there. Hickory also prides itself on being a community for those wishing to continuously explore new challenges and expand their horizons. Through exciting programs, events, and collaborative environments, the citizens of Hickory have a wide array of options for continuing their own personal educational journey. Hickory also supports the learning community through its various public spaces, such as an outstanding library system, an exciting science center, aquarium, and planetarium, a critically acclaimed art museum, all dedicated to providing residents with more hands-on educational experiences. You'll find a community building a strong educational foundation for our children while fostering an environment of lifelong learning.
Hickory provides a wide assortment of home styles and locations, whether they be close to the downtown environment or further out in a spacious area, some preserving the area's heritage, while others accommodating a more contemporary lifestyle. Residents of Hickory enjoy a diverse shopping experience, with a vibrant downtown containing unique shops, major shopping centers, and nationally recognized businesses, and everything in between. Hickory boasts an impressive number of both local and franchise restaurants all over the city, but for those looking to do it yourself, there are an assortment of grocery stores of all sizes, and the downtown farmer's market can provide you with some wonderful locally grown options. To help residents enjoy a happy and healthy life, Hickory has two major hospitals, both within the city limits, and an impressive collection of primary and specialty clinics throughout the area, with award-winning and nationally recognized healthcare services. One of Hickory's shining stars is its arts and culture centers, including a science center with a planetarium and aquarium, an art museum with its variety of national and local exhibits, a community theater, symphony, choral society, public library system, and downtown musical performances. And when it comes to recreation, Hickory has plenty to offer. Around the area, you will find many public parks and recreation areas, earning Hickory the recent title of one of the nation's most playful cities, a minor league baseball team, a historic racecar speedway, beautiful golf courses, and an annual PGA Tour event, festivals and events throughout the year, charity opportunities for the entire family, and activities through the local university and community college can all be found in the Hickory area. All of these things combine to create a community filled with opportunities and providing positive lifestyles for both residents current and future. Proud of our past and excited about our future.
Continuously helping our community learn and grow while building a foundation with our future residents.
A three-time All-America City. This is Hickory, North Carolina. Life well crafted.
Doesn't that make you pretty proud to be part of Hickory, North Carolina? We have pieces of this video on our website, hickorywellcrafted.com, for anyone to use and to pass along to the up to others, and the video will also be on the web portal in the near future. Our plan is to take this video to businesses, educational institutions, civic clubs, and many other organizations, as well as to give copies of it for anyone and everyone to tell the world about Hickory, North Carolina. As you know, it takes all of us telling our story. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. And now Debbie Shannon, the Director and Program Manager for Innovate the Poll, to give us an update on Innovate the Poll.
Good evening. I want the first sentence of the real honor from you. I'm so happy to be here and have the opportunity to share what we've been up to under this project, and we've turned Innovate the Poll. I've been told I have five minutes to do this, which will be quite a feat if I can manage it, because once I get talking about it, it's hard for me to stop. I'm very, very excited to share with you. Innovate the Poll is the name given to an economic competitiveness plan that has been developed through a process of research, based in focus group studies, interviews, some analyses, and statistical looks that we've taken through the work of the Southern Growth Policies Board, which you guys may be familiar with out of the Raleigh area. They came in and really helped us focus specifically on our economic environment and how we stack up regionally, statewide, and elsewhere as an economic entity. And from that study, what was developed was what we now call Innovate the Poll. It is a process that is already underway, and what we've done in an effort to narrow the scope of work so that we can be effective and have some early impacts in the way of transforming our economy from a competitiveness standpoint is we narrowed it to six specific areas of work. And that's what you see on the screen. The logo at the top is the logo that you'll start to hopefully have seen around town on some signage, that is the name of the process, Innovate the Poll. And underneath it, what you'll see are the six icons that we are using to identify the work groups that are actively taking on the work of Innovate the Poll as we speak. The six work groups that we've identified are, we try to basically symbolize them in a way that they would be recognizable and easy to spot if we use them over and over again around and inside of our community, so that everyone can see a visual of what it is we're doing and be reminded that the work is going on on behalf of our community. So I'd like to just give a brief overview of the six work groups, and then we actually have one of our work group leaders here who's going to share specifically what that particular work group is doing. And before I do, I want to say that we've put in place somewhat of a structure around Innovate the Poll, because this isn't the first time our community has undertaken a strategic initiative in the way of economic competitiveness. This is just what we're doing now, based on where we are and the environment we find ourselves in, and the statistics and data that have been given to us. So what we've done is, I'm in a position called Director/Program Manager, and I'm there to facilitate this process. So I kind of compare it to, I come from a family of professional athletes, so I compare it to sports. This is to keep the ball moving down the field, so that we continue to see progress with each of our work groups as we develop this plan of action. And in addition to me, and maybe definitely more important than me, we have an executive council that has been put together that is involved with the work of the work groups, making sure that we stay focused in those areas that we've identified, that we need to pay attention to. And we are in the midst right now of putting together what's called our community leadership team. The emphasis being on the work for me, the emphasis is on the work community. So this particular group will be a larger group, and it will be made up of folks that are from all parts of our county, all facets of the community, and their job is to be inward-focused on work groups and what they're doing, and also outward-focused. I want, we want those folks to be out sharing in the community, sharing in their circles of influence, and letting our community know what we're undertaking on their behalf. That having been said, let me tell you about our six work groups. The first one is called Building. That particular group is called Building for Jobs, and you each have a brush here, and they'll explain it further, but that group is focused on developing an inventory of shovel-ready, site-ready locations for particular industries or companies who might want to relocate here. We have been told that we don't have an inventory, and that's something that has caused us to fall off of some of the competitive lists that we might have been on had we had that inventory built, and so that's what they're focused on working toward. Reinventing Spaces is a group that's focused on some of the legacy structures that we found within our community that have seen better days, I should say, and we have the work group leader here to share further about that, so I'll let him talk about that. Inspiring Communities is a work group that's focused on community assets. We have found that in a particular demographic within our community, we're losing the 20- to 44-year-old age group at a higher rate than would normally be considered average. So we're trying to kind of tackle that in the way of, what do we need to do within our community to continue to attract that particular age group and or keep that particular age group here? The Entrepreneurs' Work Group is focused on specifically the concept of entrepreneurship and small businesses in a community. We all understand that that is the economic engine of any community, and of course even of our entire country. So what is it that we want to do as a community to make sure that we hold firm our value of that particular economy, which is the small business and entrepreneurship community? Leading is a work group that's focused on developing leadership within our community as a cultural value, if you will. What do we need to do to make sure that we're continuing to encourage leadership with our young people, such as the ones that are sitting on the back row who are already demonstrating leadership in their circles, but beyond that, within our businesses, and within our municipalities, and within our community organizations? We want to continue to encourage leadership, so what do we want to do as a community to make sure that that occurs? And lastly, Workforce. That work group is focused on the connectivity between the employers and the job seekers. One of the things that Southern Growth Policies Board identified within our community is a labor skills mismatch. We have jobs that are available within this county that we're unable to fill with the labor force that we have here, because of a certain skill set that might be missing. Now that is probably normal and natural within any community, but we want to narrow that gap in a way that allows us to drive down the unemployment number and drive up the productivity level of the employers that we have here. And so that particular group is working really hard around what are the policies or programs we want to put together to really focus in specifically on our community's needs, what our employers need, and what our job seekers need in order to narrow that gap. And if we can accomplish all of that, what we understand is that as a community, we up our visibility on the economic competitiveness scale, and it sets us up to be a potential site for companies that might want to locate here, as well as to create an environment for those of us who are already here to narrow and lower that unemployment rate, because ultimately in the end, what we're trying to do is create a growing community with more and better jobs. And that's what we have. And frankly, after that video, I am really glad I live here. I knew that already, but that was bad with the video. So I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Schufert. The way that our work groups are structured right now is we have all volunteer base, and I mean, I was looking at the numbers, I believe we have close to 200 volunteers, and when I kind of did a cross-sectional look, I have in my database over 90 organizations represented by people who are volunteering to help with this effort, and over 35 companies and organizations have allowed people to spend their time helping with this initiative, and we're just getting started. So I expect that number to grow. And one of those folks is Stephen Schufert, who leads our Reinventing Spaces work group.
Thank you, Debbie. Okay, I thought I'd give you a little summary as to what our particular work group is up to, just by way of example, and to raise awareness generally, because we want to be known and hopefully supported by everybody in the community. First, a mission. Our mission is to improve the aesthetics and economic development potential of the community by reinventing spaces through programs that promote the demo or renovation of vacant structures. So obviously, the concept here is pretty obvious. You know, some of these older legacy structures, as Debbie called them, are not particularly sightly, they don't necessarily fuel economic development, they certainly don't create potential for future development, and that's what we're about, is trying to change that. So our progress to date, the Innovate the Poll Executive Council has endorsed a pilot project. That pilot project is to be focused on Hickory. Vacant property, and the reason for that, I should explain, is many, but one of the key reasons is that there was already a pretty substantial inventory and other tools that we could start with to get us going. And we felt like, as Debbie stated before, one of the things we're really focused on is trying to really drive some early wins, get going, and build support for initiatives like Reinventing Spaces. So we've assimilated a property database of vacant commercial properties. We prioritize those properties according to some criteria that I'm going to share with you. We've identified the target properties that we're interested in focusing on first, and then we've started to build our document around our program and what the program proponents are going to be, which clearly obviously is going to be essential to our success, and we'll get into that here shortly. So as I mentioned, the pilot project, as I mentioned, Hickory has been, we decided would be a focus with the idea that with some success here within the city, we'll be able to kind of extend that success more broadly into the county at large. As I mentioned, there are already some programs that are already in effect here, whether it's the Brown Fields Initiative and some other development initiatives that we felt like were very leverageable in a sense, things we could learn from and capitalize upon in terms of moving our Reinventing Spaces project or work group forward pretty aggressively. We also, of course, thought that, you know, a pilot project makes sense, it's a new initiative. We're not expecting to get everything right the first time, and as such, we felt like, beyond just expedience of the inventory and whatnot, just the opportunity to have that pilot, that laboratory, if you will, probably not the best word, but in any case, to really refine the program and make sure as we scale it up on a countywide basis, that we've got most of the kinks worked out, if you will. And then, of course, we feel like we're more likely to garner support from the broader county, to the extent that we've got some demonstrated successes that we can point to, in the case of our pilot, that get people warmed up to the idea of embracing the Reinventing Spaces project on a, here again, countywide basis. So as I mentioned, we prioritize a property. We started with a full inventory, I think a relatively full inventory, that Brian Fraser helped us with, of vacant properties here within the Hickory City Limits. And we went about prioritizing those particular properties, so that we could really get focused on what we thought would be real key wins to kind of get our Reinventing Spaces initiative kicked off and rolling. And what you see here, some of the criteria, or the criteria, that were used for purposes of doing just that, prioritizing the properties. So what we did is we basically, we started with a set of commercial standalone facilities and then new residential facilities in our initial list, square footage in excess of 5,000. And then, as you can see here, we kind of developed some criteria and scored each property based on their, you know, they're meeting those particular criteria. So zoning type, we assigned relatively high weighting, as you can see, to properties that were within the Hickory URA. We also took a look at the properties that we deemed to be in what we were calling a gateway area, and this was a, those of you, there are a few of you that are in the Inspiring Spaces group and are aware of that terminology. We talk about, you know, access or corridors into the city that are particularly visible, or sort of a first impression of a city, clearly pretty important to the extent we're trying to revitalize and reinvent. So gateway area location was also assigned a relatively high weighting. We assigned some weighting to visibility of the property from some of these thoroughfares, and then we got into some of the other more pragmatic things, like to the extent to which perhaps environmental phase one or two had already been completed, which would of course give us a little bit of a head start to a certain extent. And then land value, building type, and to a certain extent, whether or not the property was listed for sale or leased. So those are the criteria we use for purposes of prioritizing our properties. And this is a map that I know is difficult to see, but basically I wanted to kind of show you how the properties ended up kind of clustering a little bit. You have kind of a 321 Oldenor Road cluster, here again, a significant gateway into the city, another gateway, the First Avenue kind of corridor in from the west side of the city, more in kind of that Longview area, then kind of the central district, if you will, of uptown and Center Street. Then there's kind of a Highland Avenue-Tate Boulevard cluster, which here again is a pretty significant corridor, and then an I-40 cluster of properties. So that's kind of how our priorities kind of fell out, and although it may be difficult to see, there's also red and green. The red really indicates, as I stated there, properties that are more likely candidates for demolition, the green being probably better candidates, and we hope would be better candidates for AR or adaptive reuse or redevelopment. So so far, our work group has identified some key program elements that will give you some sense for the kind of things we're going to be working on to try to create, I guess, the right environment and incentives for property owners to work with us to achieve the either demo or renovation outcome. First of all, we believe that just a well-defined First of all, we believe that just a well-defined program and having one in place creates some structure around which we can educate property owners and generally kind of get their buy-in. It gives us something to market, something to talk about. The model of a one-stop shopping or kind of a case management approach, we've also been emphasizing as well. We think there's a lot of fear of the unknown, there's not an awareness. I think there's a tendency towards stasis in the sense that if people don't know, property owners don't know kind of what this is all about and how they might go about it, I think the tendency is to pay the property bill, let the property kind of sit and stay potentially an eyesore and certainly not an engine of economic opportunity in the area. We talked a lot about a program that has pre-qualified vendors, whether it's demo, inspection, certainly contractors and the like. The idea here again, the theme here being more turnkey, make it easy, make it straightforward, kind of get out the unknown since the property owners are more likely to embrace the program. Assistance around inspection and compliance, I think you get the theme here. Here again, we're trying to, you know, freeze the wheels, make it easy, make it turnkey since that folks will kind of move off the dime, if you will, and decide that the better option is to move forward with what's next for that particular piece of property as opposed to not. And then offer assistance with grant programs, tax incentive fee waivers, a lot of programs that are already in place that here again may not be well-understood or known. And here again, by adding that one-stop shopping approach, we can walk, the plan is to walk folks through that, assist them and really frankly just make it easy. Also, there's a program marketing element. People don't know about it, don't know about the Reinventing Spaces program. Obviously, we don't get very far, so clearly there's going to be website, direct mail. And I would like to emphasize too, just direct property owner outreach. I think we need to engage property owners, talk to them about the program and what we're doing. In a sense, you know, reduce their perhaps fear or uncertainty around, you know, what this process might be like and convince them hopefully that here again that we're going to be able to help them achieve, you know, a better outcome for the property than here again letting it kind of fall into disrepair. And then perhaps, you know, third enforcement and the like is going to be a part of the initiative as well. That's kind of the push-pull, if you will, of the program, I think we think is probably a meaningful element as well. Next steps, we're drafting our full plan. We have a great outline that we're going to build on and that document will kind of serve as our charter going forward for what the specifics of the program are. We plan to gather input from community stakeholders and property owners to see, to a certain extent judge to what extent they feel like we're kind of scratching their adages, if you will, and we're proposing something that they're indeed going to embrace. Finalizing, we're going to finalize the program at that point based on that feedback, going to obtaining hopefully resource commitments, then activate the program, market it, market the program as I mentioned, and then monitor. This is a pilot. The idea is to learn, to adjust, to improve, and that's what we expect to do. And then, as I've mentioned before, to ultimately extend that pilot out to the Catawba County at large. So that's it. Any questions?
I have questions. Are you planning this in Hickory as a model?
That was the idea, yes, is that we would use Hickory as a model for reasons that were mentioned to some extent. It was an expedient decision that there were certain, frankly, just kind of infrastructure, if you want to call that, in form of available data and some other programs, frankly, that have been quite successful in the area around, particularly around kind of new business development and some of the assistance that Barry and Brian and others have been a part of. So we really feel like Hickory offers a unique opportunity to kind of get us moving in the right direction rather quickly. And then, as I mentioned, to ultimately do an accounting of what we learned, adjust the program and hopefully add something that's very scalable. And then hopefully have Hickory to hold up as an example of some of the successes that are possible when people get the resources, when folks get the resources along.
Well, we have already some really stellar programs. We have Operation Vacant City, which is doing street and indoor inspired projects and all these other things. And I think that staff is going to bring the job with the revitalization here of this that they've already did. And our Brownfields have been very well publicized. So we probably have, and our code enforcement, we've been very aggressive with code enforcement here. So we probably have some great programs going on that would circle well.
Well, and I'm happy to report that we have a fairly good representation of some of the folks that are involved in some of those programs on our committee, so and they're adding a lot of value and, like I said, I think that's been a key asset as well. We've got several of the folks here that are distinguished workgroup members as well. And so we feel like we have a great team and can build on some of those lessons and improve upon and scale them.
In some cases, you might not have to really look through.
And that is exactly our intention. So Hickory represents a unique opportunity because there's been such great leadership here. So we're excited about the opportunities and think it will have a meaningful impact on the community ultimately. So thank you for your time. Thank you, Stephen.
Look around, we see some good examples, Hall O'Shea Rea, an immediate project over off. One of those streets here, you guys, that people do. And there's a sign up at Maret's Mills that says, "Multi-use space available." And there's one of the Innovate Catawba signs is up that says, "Reinventing Spaces." Lots of good things happening here and I think, one of the things that I think is going to set apart this effort from maybe some previous efforts is Hickory's kind of agreed to be the, I'm going to call it Innovate Hickory, test project that I hope will provide leadership throughout county and beyond. And Piedmont Wagon has been sold and is going to be used to, it's going to be beautified and it also is going to add jobs. So we're excited about that building too over next to the, that's our oldest, it does the industry, isn't it Piedmont Wagon?
That's the worst industry in West Hickory.
And if you go out 321, you'll see the wagon wheel, the giant wagon that the people in West Hickory raise the money to do themselves in this economy. Okay. No other questions to be heard? Motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Mr. S. S. Seaver, on the favor of please say aye. All of you know that's unanimous, all members are friends. Motion to reaffirm or ratify on second reading? Motion by Mrs. Font, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All of you know that's unanimous. Anything to be moved off the consent agenda?
Please be approved, second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mr. Layle, all in favor, please say aye. All of you know that's unanimous. Public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item of new business, a public hearing this evening, a call on the city's principal planner, Mr. Calhoun, who will be presenting his own petition for property actually that you all are handling next.
Mr. Berry, Mr. Rock, Mr. Councilman, Mr. Crump. As Mr. Berry introduced, this is resumé petition, section 11. Again, the petition on the property of the city of Hickory being that this property recently annexed by the city of Hickory for purposes of utility connections to property and block-shaped development. The property is located 1076 Fox Shays Lane. Request is to resumé the property from Top County R-20 residential to the city of Hickory R-1 residential. Property is just shy of half acre size, but current development on property is single-family residence. This particular map shows the future land use classification for Hickory by Choice 2030. Property in question is outlined here in red. Entire area surrounding the property is special low-district residential. The R-1 district is by name, low-district residential, so this is particularly, zone change from the property from Top County R-20 to the city of Hickory R-1 consists of future plans. Zone districts are fairly well comparable to a single-family residential, about half acre in size, predominantly rural areas of the city and county. This area actually shown in white here is actually the city of New Haven, so that's why it's not included in the shaded area of the map here. With respect to existing land use there, you can see as a single-family residential development. You stand before the building this way. This is Robin Wood and further out this way, this is actually Robinson Road going back north toward the Target Shopping Center. And this map here shows the existing zone classification that is currently present in the area. The property in question is R-20 Top County. It's air shown in the, the luggage type, or is R-20 residential Top County. The area in white is shown in existence city of Hickory R-1 and the area in tan is showing the city of New Haven R-20. So you've got a little mixture of different types of single-family residential zone in this area. With that, I will close and say that the staff does recommend approval of the resumé of the property. The property is consists of future plans. The plan commission reviews the application office 28 to the national recommendation approval to city council also. With that, I will close and answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun.
Yes, sir. We will now open a public hearing. We would like to ask that the first 15 minutes or the votes that approve the motion against this proposal, the next 15 minutes, the votes who would like to speak in favor of the proposal in a voting to rebuttal and subrebuttal. We ask that you be considerate of other speakers and help allot the time so that everyone gets to speak. With that, I declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and answer a motion or discussion.
I'm just approval of the read, Senator.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton. Any vote of discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All of you know that's unanimous. I'd like to appoint Susan McDonald, wife of the former mayor, not ex-mayor. Ex-mayors are dead, former mayors alive. That was according to the newspaper, thank you, Mr. McInver. I didn't understand that distinction, but. Susan McDonald, wife of the former mayor, senior bureau commission, and former mayor Bill McDonald, Department of Recreation. Any other comments?
Move approval of the mayor's request.
Motion by Mr. Layle, second by Mr. Seaver. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All of you know that's unanimous. Any matters not on the agenda? Any general comments?
I'd like to remind you that Carolina Psycho Challenge, this Sunday, they're supposed to sign up the day of the event and also to find the way to do my symphony for the concert, Sunday evening, and the sales that showcase the talent we have in Hickory and all those people that make the cost of impact and getting back to the Hickory area to try people living in this.
The former that just been on the ankle TV, is that right?
I'm going to warn you.
We've got coming up, the golf tournament. It's going to be a good time, it's going to be a good chance to showcase Hickory and the entire area. I urge you to get out there if you can and enjoy seeing the legends, the Murray match, the week of Lino is going to be there. Oktoberfest is coming up, which we understand is going to be bigger, better than ever. And of course, LR University Football. They are having a great year, folks, it's fun to watch. I got to see them pounding on the ground against the wind dings in the driving rain. Anything else? Motion to go to close session?
I'm moving to go to close session.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mrs. Patton. All in favor, please say aye. All of you know that's unanimous. Thanks for being here, thanks to our young people. The young people on the back, Louise, are they with you?
Um, no. They're on the council.
On the youth council, great, good to see you guys.